Test, test. We're good. All right, everybody. Welcome to Thursday, May 23rd session of our Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Kay, would you take a roll, please?
Jay Enstrom is absent. Nicholas DeFrank.
Present.
Jeff Daflin.
Here.
Nick Missione. Kim McGee.
I can't really talk, but here.
Okay there, Kim.
That was a croak. But I'm here.
Jared Moore is absent. Cindy Suplesio is absent.
All right, kicking things off, folks. Looking, any comments on the minutes from our last meeting? I was not here, so I'm looking to the three of you for responses, guidance, feedback.
They look good to me.
I will entertain a motion in that case. No comments?
I wasn't here.
Kim, Jeff, were you here? And are you either, are you able to?
I was.
Make a motion and vote on the minutes, whether you're at the meeting or not.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
There we go.
Second.
All right. Good. I've, we abstain that we were not here, correct, on voting on this?
You can vote for them.
Okay.
We would need all four of you to vote positively to approve them.
All right, I'm in. Nick, Jeff, Kim.
Hi.
Hi.
All right, moving right into it then. Is anyone here not to speak on age-friendly Carbondale this evening? No, okay. Anybody online who would like to speak for public comment versus not on the agenda? This is your golden window.
No one here.
All right. With that, let's get into the main event. So, age-friendly Carbondale, your Highway 133 study, very excited to hear more about this, an area that I have lots of questions and interest in, so looking forward to your presentation tonight. So, we have about 45 minutes set up for this, for us to kind of get through it, and just wanting to be conscious of that. We do some items after that internally. So, but for now, we're really excited for that. Let us know how you want this to roll, but for now, the floor is yours. Please remember, just if you could introduce yourselves, names and address when presenting. Thank you.
I hate to talk and be seated, seated, so I hope this is okay. How do I get it on the screen while we share the screen? It's not the first one. There we go. Okay, and it's just this one. So, hi, hi. I'm Nikki Delson. I'm the Chair of Age-Friendly Carbondale. I want to introduce just a couple of other people who are going to be presenting. So maybe you want to introduce yourselves? Okay. And Ron Kokish and Ted Sislas. So, there are a couple of reasons why we are here, and I hope that you've had an opportunity to read the report. I know it's very long, but if you didn't, we'll try and take you through it. But it's 55 pages, so we're not going to go through 55 pages, but we're going to tell you how you could use it. We're going to tell you why we've done it, and how we've done it, and what we hope to accomplish by having done this. So, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to share our principles and our guiding philosophy that's supported, supported both by legislation and by our commitment. But first, we want to give a couple of thank yous. So, how does this, it doesn't, Ron? Towards the computer? Nope.
What are you clicking?
Maybe I'm going to...
Remember, it always works except for...
Except for the presentation.
Except for the presentation. Technology at its finest.
Where the BBT?
It was working.
Well, it knows that you want to give thanks to Jared.
There we go. Okay, okay. So, we, Age-Friendly Carbondale, the Board of Age-Friendly Carbondale is made up of all retirees, and we have no paid staff, and our backgrounds are not in traffic engineering, but we have had careers. We're pretty good researchers, and we are committed members of the community, and have been with bicyclists, with pedestrians, and we're very involved in community organization. So, I'm going to take you, Kevin Shoresman and Jared have helped to mentor us when we didn't know what we were doing, when we didn't understand how the specifics of the town worked, or what needed to come next, or we presented first to the Bike Pedestrian Committee, I think two weeks, commissioned two weeks ago. William Crawford is the Traffic Engineer from Region 3 of CDOT, who has been very helpful and very committed, and he spent four hours with us walking on Highway 133, and we'll share a little bit more about that. We started, Matt Farrar is a consultant with Western Slope, Western Slope, and he helped to guide us in creating the survey and all the data access points that we used. And the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission, I was a commissioner for six years, and that's where I got my orientation to the bikes and trails and pathways around town. So, we're going to talk a little bit about just how we envision Highway 133, which in traffic lingo is really called a strode, which is neither a road nor a street. It's a combination of the two, and in traffic lingo, it's referred to as the futon of traffic planning. A futon tries to be a couch, and it tries to be a bed, but it's not good at either one. And so, that's how the highway is looked upon, because it's neither a street nor a road. The road gets people from one access point to another, and cars move quickly, and there's not a whole lot of commercial development along it. So, we're going to do our best in presenting to you tonight to present the voices of the community, because that was our promise to the people as they filled out the survey, and Ron and Susan will share with you that kind of data. So, let me talk a little bit, did, was there a, one before this one, Ron? No. Back, Ron? Yes. Okay. So, let me just share a little bit about how we got here. And the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission, we have been doing, when I was a member, we did walk audits. So, there are priority corridors all around the town of Carbondale. Highway 133 was listed as a priority corridor. We have been assessing those for pedestrian access since 2019. Part of being in the Bike Pedestrian Trails Commission, we were given two fellowships to the National Walking College, which was a six-month commitment to help us figure out how to engage the entire community in relooking at how you develop a community that weaves together all parts of the community. And so, Highway 133 really divides our community in half, and our purpose in coming before you is to talk about how planning and zoning could help us weave back together those pieces of the community. Okay, Ron, next slide. So, I think I already said that the purpose that we had in coming before you was to provide a conduit for the community, to get those people who have the power to make changes, hear the voices of the community people. But I want to talk about something that has happened very, very recently, and really helps us be able to come to you and say, we have a whole paradigm shift that supports all of the work that we've done in the last year. So, the paradigm shift has come down from the Federal Highway Administration to all states, saying that we no longer are going to look at how we create highways with the traditional approach, but of looking at crashes and things after they happen, but we're going to take a safe systems approach and mandate that all of the states incorporate that in their planning, where the safe systems approach proactively identifies the risks, doesn't wait till a risk occurs, doesn't wait for an accident to occur, but proactively identifies them and addresses them, because they know that they will occur if they don't address them now. Just last, let's see, two days ago, I got an email from the National Road Safety Strategy Commission of the Colorado Department of Transportation. Okay, let me see what it's called. From the federal transportation, highway transportation system that is asking communities, it came directly to community organizers and people who are doing the planning, asking us to help them. They say that they can't do it alone, and ask us to get in touch with all, government at all levels, in order to help incorporate a safe systems approach on all of the state highways. And in Colorado, that system is called the Vulnerable Users Guide. Ron? Okay, so these were our guiding principles in the development of the report that you have before us, where we looked at how can we change Highway 133, so it helps to integrate and weave the town together using a safe systems approach for the most vulnerable users of our streets. Ron? Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Susan and Ron, who are going to talk to you about the data collection.
So, we, we reached out to the community in lots of ways. I think I met Jared at one of these events on First Friday or something. We held events at First Fridays, farmers' markets, Danieline Days. We engaged people. We talked to them. We invited them to come to our table and visit and tell us their stories. We had a one board up where people could write stories or comments about Carbondale, tried to get them to direct them to 133, but we had comments on 59 Post-its. A lot of them, everything overlapped, all of our data overlapped. But we feel like with all of these First Fridays, farming markets, Danieline Days, we were able to reach into the community pretty well, the people that are out and about. The next one, we, at that table, we had a, oops, we had a map of the 133 corridor, and we asked people to put sticky dots on it, and then fill out a comment card showing what event they had observed, or near miss, or concern that they had about, what is it, eight intersections along, well, we let them come up with them, but we identified eight intersections, I think, that were issues of concern. And then, the big thing that we had was the survey, the next one. So, it was 16-question survey. We had it with one of those codes that you could use, but also that you, we liked it when people filled it out online digitally, but a lot of people were so appreciative of having a piece of paper to write on. I think anytime this town does any kind of outreach, it really needs to make that effort to give people paper to write on. And then, we typed all those entries and pretended it was a digital entry, entered it digitally. And we had 463 surveys that way. We also, with this survey, we've had it printed in and online, in Spanish and in English, and we delivered it to specific places, like the bank, the Third Street Center, the library, lots of businesses, the rec center, the launch pad. We had a Latina community organizer, and she was great. She went into restaurants and walked up to people in Spanish and talked to them and said, you need to fill this out. I was with her one day on First Friday, and she'd walk into the crowd, and it's like, you need to fill this out. And I'm like, and she's like, you need to fill this out. She was great. So, we got a little bit of penetration into the Latina community, but not as much as we would hope. But we got all those surveys and lots of good data, data that we could quantify, and then also lots of comments that were harder to deal with. But Ron was great with that. And the next image, what's up next? So, like I said, Nikki said, we're a bunch of retired researchers, most of us. So, we also dove into what was the past information that could help us not only just say what, you know, what all the comments and complaints were, but to help guide us into what have we tried to do before, what's the information that has been presented before, what have we accomplished, not accomplished, based on a lot of those, those reports and documents all through the, all through the years. And something that kept coming up that just was really frustrating was that this, these issues have been studied for a very long time, and have been, oh, we'll deal with that later, we'll deal with that later. There's always something more important to get to. The 2013 Comprehensive Plan and the 2022 Comp Plan, the Smart Growth America, the Marketplace Traffic Impact PAC Study that predicted the problems with the getting in and out of city market, and said, oh, we'll deal with it later. Right now, there's not enough traffic. So, a couple of things that we're going to be asking you to do as far as planning is that whenever a project comes to you, that these issues of transportation, like Nikki showed in that last slide, proactively are dealt with, not as something that we're going to deal with later when it becomes a problem, but we know it's going to be a problem, and we need to address it immediately. I know with Garfield County Commissioners, one of the projects that's being proposed on, down by Cattle Creek in that area, and yeah, they wanted to put in a whole lot of houses. It makes a lot of sense to do it there, but they were going to be required to do a major highway intersection, which became propitiously expensive for them, and that project was dropped. So, it's that kind of thing. It's like, you can't just keep building and not provide the infrastructure to handle what we're allowing to happen on 133. So, I think that's all of me. Oh, sorry, one more, one more. Ron? And so, as Nikki said, Bill Crawford of CDOT, we had an event, and they, Sue Sislas was able to connect with a couple of wheelers, as they call themselves, and we can call them that too, who, people who use wheelchairs, and spent four hours managing them moving around 133. One of them lives near Keter Road on the south side, and the other, but all of them go to City Market, and they want to go to Dollar Store across the street. There's lots of issues with them, and that's a particularly important, vulnerable community, because that's ADA issues. So, those are all the pieces of information that we pulled together into this report. Thank you. I think Ron's up next.
Your mic.
Okay, now, all right, good. Because I'm going to say here, I get, first thing I have to tell you, just for my own comfort, is that I'm really uncomfortable here. My major in graduate school was social work with groups, and any one of my professors would say, take down that room, you know, get rid of those tables, get the chairs together. I don't like this kind of setup. I think it really inhibits communication, but it's what we've got. So, I'm not really even sure what that, what happened to that? Says my screen is paused. Not good.
We can see data analysis on the screen.
It's, yeah, but it's not saying that on my screen. What happens if I move it down? See, nothing happens. I can't move my screen. Help, Jared. I'm not sure what I touched there. How about escape? Okay, all right, good. Well, yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah. So, I'm going to talk to you about the posted notes and about the, the surveys, and then Susan's going to come back and talk about the, some of the, or Nikki actually is going to talk about the mapping that we did. The posted notes, there were not a whole lot, 59. And the easiest way to give you an impression of what people said on those is, this is called a word cloud, and you know, what all it is, it's just, it's a computer program that looks at all the words, counts how often they appear, cuts out the obvious ones that you don't want to be looking at, like conjunctions and articles, and it takes the nouns and the verbs, and it, the more often they appear, the bigger they are. So, what's the biggest thing is City Market and speed limits, right? That's what the people on the posted notes were concerned about. And like I say, the posted notes are probably the least significant part of what we did, but it's worth looking at this quickly, because it's consistent with everything else that we learned. Who do we talk to? Okay, so we, we, on, in terms of age, you can see from the bar graphs that the younger people are underrepresented. The middle-aged group is just about right. The older group is overrepresented. We don't think that's terribly significant, and I'll tell you why in a minute. We talk much more to people that live in or near Carbondale that fill this out. We didn't get any attention, and I'm glad we didn't, from people, you know, no, I'm just visiting from Missouri. So, we're talking to locals here. These 463 surveys are from people who live in Carbondale, who shop in Carbondale, who recreate in Carbondale, who work at Carbondale. And, but the few people that we got that don't come from Carbondale, their opinions weren't very different, which I'm saying, there's no correlation. You know, it's not like the locals had a different opinion than the people who, who were from further away. And in terms of ages, I'm missing some bar graphs there. Are they going to come up? No. Okay. Oh, no, I'm not. Okay. And then, we did find one correlation in age, which is that the, the younger a group was, the less time they spent in a car. And that was kind of a nice, I mean, we won't have time to look at it. It's really a nice set of steps, from the youngest group, which spent, said they spent about 50% of their time in cars, to the oldest group, which said they spent about three-quarters of their time in cars. But the one thing that all these groups had in common, I think that's the next slide, yep, is that they all wanted to spend less time in cars. Didn't matter how old they were. People in their 80s, we had a group in their 80s, said that they wanted to spend less time in cars. They didn't want to bike more. Every other group wanted to bike more. Once you got over 80, they didn't want to bike more, but they did want to walk more, and they wanted to use trans, public transportation a lot more. That's before we had, you know, our plan for the, the van, what is it called? The, yeah, the Downtowner. Hopefully, that's going to do a lot, you know, for people saying we need more public transportation. But you can see that people said that they would like to bike 72% more than they do across all age groups. They would like to walk 24% more than they do, and they'd like to drive a third less. Now, that's kind of promising, right? Because we want to get people out of their cars. We want alternate transportation. So, the question is, why don't they do it? You know, they want to bike more. Why don't you get on your bike and bike? That's the reason. People are afraid of Highway 133. That is the overriding reason that they do not get out of their cars, because they don't feel safe outside of their cars.
And do you have data, Ron, for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
In terms of numbers, yeah. You can see, speaking for themselves, and these were all adults or later teenagers, they said that about half and half, that they feel safe or unsafe if they're traveling along 133 outside of a car. So, half the people, when I say neutral, we, we made a mistake in the way we designed the survey. We gave them an out. We had an odd number of choices. We should have had a forced choice, you know, or it was just an even number, and you would have to fall on one side of the other. That was a mistake we made, but it's too late. So, the, a third were neutral. They basically didn't take a position, because we didn't force them to. But the people who did take a position, half of them are afraid to even walk or bike along 133, and it's about two and a half to one feeling unsafe crossing 133, either by bike or on foot or in a wheelchair, I suppose.
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry to cut you off.
Sure, no, no, please.
Was this meant, did you, if there are questions, I know there are a couple, you know, two commissioners are online as well. Do you want questions to come in flow, or would you like us to hold questions until the end?
I don't mind taking them as they come.
Okay.
I don't know, but, you know.
Susan, do you, do you mind? I don't want to ruin your flow by any means.
No, but I mean, no, no, I don't mind. I, I... Yeah. I don't think we're going to be overwhelmed with questions that held back too much. So...
My quick question was, was there any other option, like inclement weather or time of day?
Yes, yes.
So, were there options beyond?
We're going to have, we have another slide later on that.
Okay.
We will cover that.
Great.
The, now, when it comes to children, people having their children anywhere near 133, it's, it's disastrous, right? I mean, the 66% of people say they worry about their children, and 12%, you know, if they had children, they'd worry. So, almost everybody's worried about having their kids take a bike ride along 133. And just on, you know, my personal experience, my granddaughter, when she was 12, 13, going to Rosmont de Sore, she wouldn't ride that bike trail along 133. She didn't want anything to do with it. She found backways to get there. And crossing 133, everybody's terrified for their kids to cross 133. Now, how does that fit with what we've got all over our comp plan? Small-town character. Smart growth. I mean, it just doesn't, right? The small towns where I raised my kids, they went to school in a town of 8,000 people. They went to a private school, and they hung out after school. They called public transportation home. I was not concerned about them and the traffic there at all. Took, they had, they had some years, they had as much as an hour and a half after school, until they could get a public bus back home. And, you know, that was a small town, and we just weren't worried about it. And here, people don't, are afraid to have their kids out alone. So, is the fear realistic? You know, what's it based on? Well, this, we had three questions on the survey where we had people give comments. And again, I, all, you can look at this online. You can see every comment online. Okay, we're not keeping any data from you. The, the appendixes sees to this report go down as low as the raw data, so that you can see for yourselves what we're referring to. These are word clouds of the comments that people made. And on the, on the three questions, and again, they're all the same, pedestrian crossing, City Market, Highway 133, crossing 133, cross 133, lack of traffic enforcement, which we're not very big on personally, by the way, but a lot of people want more enforcement. So, this is, subjectively, this is what people are afraid of. Then, we asked them objectively, have you ever been in or personally witnessed an accident or a close call? So, 16% of So 16% of people said they had personally witnessed or been in an accident. I don't know if that's a high number. It seems high to me for a small town, for 16% of people to say that they've been in or witnessed an actual accident. And in terms of close calls, we had about half and half. Half the people who responded said that they have been in or witnessed close calls. So here's where we're going to get to your your question, Nicholas. The the good news that I that I get from this data is twofold. One is that people have a widespread desire to drive less, right? And that's that's, at least rhetorically, that's what Carbondale is all about. I don't think we've done a good job at it, but rhetorically, it's what it's about. And the public is on our side on that. Okay, the public, we're on the same side as the public. And then we see the obstacles to people doing that. 18% of the things people cited as obstacles are what you were saying. The weather's bad. Some people said, I I'm just too lazy, you know, you're never going to get me to do it. Some people said, yeah, I'd like to be out of my car more, but I'm disabled. Okay, those are things we cannot do anything about. But 82% of what people cited as as the things that keep them from getting out of their cars are actionable by a government. There are things like speed control and crosswalks and, you know, things that we can do something about. And I think that is good news. Of course, the bad news is it's not easy to do those things. But we can do it if we put our minds to it. Okay. Data analysis about intersections, you doing that, Nikki? I I'm going to recommend you sit here and do your own slides. It's I'll do them for you if you want.
No, that's all right. Well, that's not our intersection, fortunately. Okay, so Susan showed you, we had on the table at every event, a huge map of Carbondale. And we had people put, let's see, can you see, Ron, it's not? There it is. Okay. So that's the picture that we had, and the little yellow dots, we'd have people come up and say, what are the issues? What are the concerns that you have in and around walking, biking, getting to where you need to go in Carbondale? So each time we were at an event, people would fill out a card, put a sticky dot, and give us a narrative about what would happen. And then we had a plastic overlay for the next event and the next event and the next event. And they all fell into eight different intersections that were of concern to people. We ended up with about 105 sticky dots. And that that had the anecdotes for what 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 people were going on, what the concerns were. So I want to tell you how we gathered that data, how we looked at what people said. I'm going to get to the specific intersections. There were the roundabout, Hendrick Drive, City Market. City Market is not an intersection, but it was one of the major jaywalking sections. The area between around Montessori School between Keter and Went, Delores Way, the RVR area and Village Road. And in the in the book that you have that is the report, each intersection is separated so that if you get a new development that comes within that intersection, you'll be able to just pull out that intersection. With the comments that we had, we used three methods to provide us with what we should do next. So the first thing that we used was AI. We took all of the comments and fed it into AI. And it took us a while to figure out what the questions were that we wanted answered. And we formulated the questions with, number one, as a result of all of the information that you have, what are the common themes that people are telling us about this particular intersection? The second thing that AI answered for us is, what are the infrastructure changes that would address these themes? The third question that we asked is, what are, what is the prioritization? How would you prioritize those infrastructure changes? And the fourth one is, what was the rationalization for that prioritization? So we in in the the binder of with the report, you will have those four questions answered for each of these intersections. We then, of course, didn't totally trust AI. So we went out to every single intersection with the recommendations in hand and looked at the traffic patterns specific to that intersection because AI can't visualize it without more specificity. So we kept on learning how to ask it more and more difficult questions. But we went out as human beings and sat at each intersection and watched the foot traffic of pedestrians, of mothers with strollers, of people walking dogs, the way that cars turned or went through red lights without looking at the pedestrian crosswalks. We then, the third thing that we did is we went back over every single study that has been done in Carbondale back to, I think, 2011, looking at traffic patterns and recommendations. And so in the report, it will tell you, this is what was said in 2011. These are the recommendations that were made. These were the recommendations that were completed. Here's the recommendations that were made that we have done absolutely nothing about. So I'm going to take you through what that looks like with the one intersection that was the biggest jaywalking intersection, the one that rises to the level of the greatest concern when you combine both the survey data and the anecdotes that we got. And so that is the city market, what we call it, the city market jaywalking crossing intersection that included any comment that we got made about the entrance or exit to City Market, Nislanic Avenue and Industry Way. So here's, we were just two anecdotes that people gave us about this. I witnessed a person running across 133 from east to west side to get to the city market entrance. He was nearly hit by a car. I walked to shop from my home on Lincoln Avenue but have difficulty crossing at City Market. I am partially disabled and traveling in extra distance is difficult, so I had to hire a shopper. You could read the rest of the anecdotes in the appendices to the report. So what are some of the issues on this intersection that is not a legal intersection? That there are illegal and risky maneuvers by the drivers? Now, this is the summary of of all of the data that we fed into AI. That there's high traffic volume and speed so that people are afraid to cross, but they run across anyway. We've seen, and we have pictures of mothers who live in the new apartments that are across the street on the east side, running with children in strollers across the street to make their way in between traffic to get into City Market, which is the only shopping that we have here. There's a lack of adequate infrastructure, so even if somebody gets partially across the street, there's no refuge island for them wait to to make a break in the traffic. And so the distance between Village Road and the roundabout is seven tenths of a mile. So people are not likely to go to the roundabout, cross the street and get to City Market, particularly in terrible weather. So that's why they jaywalk. It doesn't matter if they have, you know, then they're not going to go either to Village Road. This was, and I do that also. So if I'm if I'm going shopping and I've walked or I've walked and I want to get to the east side from the west side because Palisade Peach Stand is there, and that's really what I want on my way home is fresh peach, then I'm going to navigate my way in between the traffic. So there is a lack of infrastructure that makes it so difficult for pedestrians and cyclists and also for wheelers. And there's a lack of awareness or caution by drivers, which is a lot related to speed because the speed limit throughout this into this whole section is 35 miles an hour. Whoops. Okay. So the prioritized infrastructure changes come first with reducing the speed. This is just an example of what you'll find for each intersection to create a legal and safe way to cross 133. And I'm going to really specify that it has to be at Nislanic Avenue. We know that the town has been working on getting the design for a roundabout at Industry Way. But people will not walk to Industry Way, particularly in bad weather, cross over there, go across the street, come back to be able to get inside of City Market. So if it comes before planning and zoning for the roundabout, I would urge you to say, before we could do a roundabout or while we are doing roundabout, we must create a pedestrian island, a refuge island to get people safely across the street. That's what the community is telling us. This is particularly true, you can hear about from people who use wheelchairs. It's just unreasonable to expect that people aren't going to go the shortest distance to get safely to the only supermarket that we have. So these are just a list of the prioritized infrastructure changes that we might make at City Market. Reducing vehicle speed is not a big ask. We have been been connecting with CDOT. The new way of looking at speed says that if a particular section of your highway is mostly commercial, you could have that highway now redesignated as a business section. Business business design, which we would be able to do from looking at the map and get the speed limit through CDOT down to 25 miles an hour from the bridge to the roundabout, have it designated as a business district and have the from the roundabout to all the way through to RVR, have it designated as a residential district, which would enable the speed to be lowered to 30. 25 miles an hour from the bridge to the roundabout as a business district, 30 miles an hour from the roundabout to RVR. So reducing the speed is only one way that we could do it. But everybody goes too fast anyway. Nobody pays attention. They drive over the speed limit. So the next thing that we would have to do is to make the road to change the structure of the road with with refuge islands, with all, well, all of the traffic calming that we have in order to make it more uncomfortable for people to go fast on the highway.
For one quick second, Nikki.
Yeah.
15 minutes left, so I just want to make sure to check in and see if you if you want to engage in the commissioners. Feel free to keep going. I just just wanted to give you a little heads up to see how you wanted to use the rest of your time.
I want to be able to enable Ted to talk with you about, unless there are any questions right now, I could skip the the remainder of the part that I was going to tell you and answer questions. But Ted is going to share with you what it was like for us to walk 133 with the CDOT traffic engineer and people who use wheelchairs because it was a very humbling experience because the things that we thought stood out for us and we were paying attention, having done walk audits, was not nearly sufficient to enable people who use wheelchairs to safely get around. So thank you for giving me that time. Ted? I'll just move this on to you.
My name's Ted Zissler. I'm the treasurer for Age Friendly Carbondale, and I'm a member of the Bike Ted Commission. So one of the things that wasn't mentioned was our mantra for Age Friendly Carbondale, which is all ages, all abilities, all included. And so you can imagine our surprise having completed this review, extensive review of all of the government contracted studies that have been done regarding our our section of 133, and none of them, not a single one, mentioned anything about safe accessibility for folks with disabilities. Those are our most vulnerable users of our roadway. And we consider this to be a significant omission, considering the fact that CDC has reported that up to 13 at any particular time, up to 13% of Americans will at some time in their life experience either a temporary or potentially a permanent disability regarding mobility issues. So there are many reasons that people may be slower in negotiating our streets and our and our walkways. Some may be ambulatory but not particularly sure-footed and may require the assistance of crutches or walkers or canes. Those that are having more complicated disabilities rely on wheelchairs or scooters for their mobility. And so you may think that there are very few Carbondale residents that have these kinds of challenges because we don't see them out and about in our within our community very often. And herein lies the paradox. These folks generally are often not not very often out there because engaging in our in community activities because our inadequate infrastructure presents barriers that are too frustrating or are in fact downright dangerous for them. For someone with a disability, there are precious few opportunities for community involvement. But being able to live as independently as possible is not only a major goal but is a major source of pride when it is achieved. Often, it's not the person's actual disability that's that sabotages their optimal independence. It's their physical barriers within the community that limit them. And so for Carbondale folks that have significant disabilities, there are precious few opportunities for them to to engage in accessible involvement within the community. And one potentially deadly barrier is the lack of safe crosswalks, particularly across Highway 133. Among our interviews of users with 133, we did include, as was mentioned, two Carbondale residents who rely entirely upon wheelchairs for all of their mobility. One of them uses a power chair. The other one uses a pushes a manual chair. And so we contacted CDOT to give them a little bit of a heads up about the potential ADA accessibility issues related to 133. And as was mentioned, Region 3 CDOT Traffic and Safety Operations Engineer, Bill Crawford, did come out to investigate and find out what we were talking about. Three of the RAFC members accompanied the two wheelchair chair users and Bill Crawford, and they went on this three or four hour investigative walkabout along 133 to evaluate where the to evaluate where the issues were. And additional people with mobility issues were also interviewed after this field trip had occurred. Among the several areas of concern that consistently tended, tended to come up among those, those individuals were three things. One was the timing of the lights and the flashing beacons are not long enough to allow for safe crossing. Second, as was mentioned, there are no respite islands anywhere along the highway, particularly where the, where the road widens to allow for safe crossing. And third, and probably the most significant, is there just aren't the safe crosswalks where they're needed, where they're most needed. As was mentioned, to, to legally use, to, to use the legal designated crosswalks, an individual pedestrian has to walk a half to three quarters, nearly three quarters of a mile to go out of their way and then double back just to get to City Market, our only shopping center. And, and for these individuals in wheelchairs, going that extra distance puts them at significant risk for shoulder and arm injuries or wearing down their wheelchair battery before they've even had a chance to complete their, their simple errand that they're, that they're engaging in. Our two interviewees in wheelchairs told us that generally they don't bother to go the extra mile. In fact, they would prefer to just jaywalk in their wheelchairs right across between City Market and the Dollar Store, which is again, the Nisslannick intersection area that was mentioned. So when we heard about this, it was abundantly clear that Carbondale in fact, has a serious problem that needs immediate attention. And so this begs the question, if we can't keep our residents reasonably safe engaging in their daily business, what are we really doing? Thanks.
Thank you, Ted.
So we had a couple of other slides and things that we want to say, but we will just open it up to conversation because you've heard enough from us and we'd like to hear from you.
Was anything, I mean, I want to respect, it was a great presentation. Thank you so much for putting that together. Very comprehensive. Anything poignant that was missed in those slides that you'd like to quickly touch on? Or do you feel complete?
The only thing that I was going to end with is something that was from our, I think it was the 2013 Traffic Impact Study that actually predicted exactly what we've been telling you. So now I've told you that I don't have to read it to you.
Thank you. Looking up at you, Kim and Jeff, wanting to check in with you and see, start with you, see if you've got any comments, any questions for our visitors.
And one quick question. I'm curious, you know, in a lot of the conversations we've had at P&amp;Z around mobility and particularly 133, often hands go up in the air because it's, this is a state highway. CDOT has certain parameters that trump any of the town planning functions and therefore there's little we could do. Is, is that something that you heard from the CDOT representative that came out? I'm really curious about the speed limits. Are there other opportunities to, to get CDOT involved with business districts and residential districts?
I think that that is an old feeling that we have had about CDOT, that they just weren't going to be partners with us. But that is no longer true. It's, it's coming down from the federal government to the state government. And Will, Bill Crawford, I mean, we, we spent four hours with him and only had to end because we had other engagements. He would have stayed here. It's going to help provide us with several interns this summer. And they are, they already have this report. They want to come to when we present it before the trustees, which we're waiting for a date to do that. They're very engaged. They're very interested in how they could help us. They were very, very respectful of the wheelchair users and wanted to look at how they could improve the highway. They're looking at how they could improve the roundabout. They'll be here again in a couple of weeks. So I don't know who asked the question because I can't see. But Jeff, I think, yeah, I think that we need to rethink our relationship with CDOT and consider them partners in moving ahead to do what we feel is necessary to make the streets safe and roads safe.
Nikki, I want to say three, three things about that. One is that the speed limit issue, actually Kevin Schorsman told us about. And it's, and it's, it's in legislation. It's a state legislation that, that we would meet the criteria. So it's not even a CDOT issue. The CDOT takes their direction from the federal government. And the federal government has changed a great deal over the last decade or so. I just looked today, there's something called the MUDTC. It, it's, it's a, it's a federal manual that, that sets, you know, standards for where, where, where you put a traffic light, where you, you know, how, how long the beacons stay on. That thing hadn't, we'd been working with 2009 and it's been totally rewritten as of, I think, the end of 23. I think it just went into effect yesterday in 24. As best as I can figure out from that manual, without having really the traffic counts or the pedestrian counts, but just going by that manual, which we're bound by, the recommended distance between safe crossings on a street like 133, 300 feet is ideal, 600 is workable. Our average distance between crossings is over 2,100 feet. We are way outside of what CDOT and the, the feds are, their guidance. And the last thing I want to say about it is that even if all that weren't true, I don't think that's a good reason to throw up our hands. I think that it's, it's our town. And I think we, we can't just throw up our hands. We have to fight for an inch by inch, if that's what's necessary, to make it a town that we can live in, where a, a mother who is, wants to go shopping at City Market isn't afraid to send her 10 and 11 year olds out alone to go to the chocolate shop across the street. That's, that's not small town character when you are afraid to let your kids step outside the supermarket alone.
Yeah, commend you for all you're doing. Thanks for the answer.
Kim, any, any comments from you on this evening?
Well, thank you so much for putting this together. This is a topic that all of us as commissioners are very, very concerned about. And we agree with you. This was very helpful for us to see this again. And I'm really interested in how CDOT can help us. Like I'm very interested in next steps and, you know, what we can actually do in real time so that this doesn't go for a long period of time without us paying any more attention to it. We want to help. So thank you for bringing this before us again and for finding out a little bit more about current legislation and good job. We're, we're interested.
So is it a planning zoning issue, Jared? Do you know the answer to change this, to, to change the designation of sections of 133? And if it's just a legislative, even if Schorsman's on, on board with making a change to speed limits?
I, I don't know the specifics of it, but it's not really a, so much of a town decision. I think it's just a, the, the town tells CDOT that we want to have this roadway designated as such. And then it kind of be, becomes reclassified. The area that you guys identified between the roundabout and 82, I believe meets the qualifications for the commercial or the business district. And then the area from the roundabout to, is it Meadowwood Drive?
I think it's the first light.
Crystal Bridge meets the designation for commercial or commercial residential. I'm going to learn words today, I promise. So I, I think it's really just the town, you know, requesting, the town as a whole requesting that. I don't think there has to be any local decision. And then it gets reclassified as such and allows CDOT to change the, the speed limit and potentially embark upon some other funding opportunities or improvement opportunities as warranted.
I wonder if there might be a traffic study required as part of that to check on queue distance and loading with change in speeds.
There, but there might be.
There's probably a bit of a CYA move on their own parks before action on that. But I, I think it's a reasonable, I mean, but I think to the point typically it's, it's originated with the municipality and then it's not a chance.
And I think some of the development that's happened over the last few years between 82 and the roundabout has helped
Yeah.
this section qualify for that commercial or business district classification. So
Clearly, yeah.
Good and bad, right?
Yeah.
One, one of the things I'd like to bring up that, that Bike Pet has recently learned is it's not enough to just lower the speed limit. You have to lower the speed at which vehicles are traveling. And that means making driving fast uncomfortable for drivers. And so that, that gets to, you know, what kind of traffic calming mechanisms might be able to be put in place to help facilitate this idea of reducing the speed.
So I want to make sure that Nick, we get a question from you two if you have them. But that's actually is where my question or my, kind of where I was sitting through this presentation. I think you've all brought up a nice series of alternatives and opportunities to, to look at 133 as far as abatement measures and general small town improvement measures. We'll go into that small town character piece, absolutely. Some of them are very quick and very easy and very affordable. And some of them are clearly outside of the range of our budget, our capacity as a small town. Has this group or has, has Age Friendly Carbondale looked into alternative funding measures, looked into, you know, opportunities where the almighty dollar, you know, can come into play and where we can receive some support for some of the alternatives that you are suggesting?
So there was a lot of money that has come down from the federal government, which requires a grant. When it first came down, you have to have a grant writer. You have to have somebody who's going to do all of that work, not in our ballpark. I mean, you know, this is not something that a small nonprofit could do. When we first heard about it, we were essentially told that it's very complicated and it might take more time from, away from staff to try and get them. You know the story. But I mean, I, I think it's worth, it's worth it for us to, to look at that. I mean, we're talking about the safety of our community. And I think we have a grant writer now, right Jared? Sort of, maybe? Yes? So the answer is there is money that has come, that is available for the, from the federal government down to the states. How we access that, how we enable staff to write that, that's really, I have to give that back to you. That's not, you know, if, if we knew about it, we would help do it. But I do, I do want to say there are two other things. I mean, I want to respond to, I guess, what Kim said. We have gotten tremendous support from national organizations, Smart Growth America, Vision Zero, people who are willing to consult with us to tell us how towns go about doing what it is that we want to do. And they're available for us to talk to and to guide us. They're actually even looking at our report to say, how can we make this happen? So the, the, the future, the, the forward thinkers, I, you know, it's not, it was never what it was that I set out to do. If I had a second career, I would actually probably do something like this. Because how you weave a town back together is, is what I would want, want to do. It's what I would say, how do we make this, this place that has separated us? You know, the community, one side from another. There are people that can help us figure out how to do that. I think that, you know, for me personally, I have way more behind me than I have in front of me. So what I, what I, for, for people in our demographics, it's more like making sense of what has come before us and where we are at this point in our life. But the visionaries are the people who are younger than us and the people who can look to the future. And they're, the national organizations are doing that. And they want to pass it down to the local groups. Even the federal highway transportation sent out a request asking us, what are you doing locally to help bring about the safe systems approach? So I think that the town, one of the things that the town needs to do is to adopt that. And, and the first thing, you know, is who will be accountable for making sure that the things that we've seen in the past, like the reports that predicted what was going to happen on 133, don't sit on a shelf, but get addressed. And so our promise to the community is that we're not going to let what we've done sit on a shelf. So here we are.
Thank you. Nick, can I check in on you?
No questions. Thank you very much. Terrific report and I think we're all in alignment.
Okay, I hope you read the whole thing.
Thank you so much for this evening, yes.
A quick comment. So there were a, a couple of things that Bill Crawford has already done, like put up those crossing signs at Hendrick and at Cowan. That there's a crossing light, you got to stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk. And they're also going to put in some highly painted, big, bright, white crosswalk painting into the roadway. And that was one of the solutions for, for Village is just to emphasize, yes, there are pedestrians here. Changing the traffic, the timing on the traffic light at Village. It's like, yes, we want pedestrians and bikes to go across. But if you're coming out of Village, then you might miss a light because so many people are going through and you don't get it. So it's like changing, those are things that don't cost anything. Those are just policy changes. The other issue that I think is important, I don't know how it impacts other people. But if you notice, 82 through Glenwood Springs is not called 82. They refer to it as Grand Avenue. And we'd like to see this referred to as Bondale Boulevard.
Awesome.
I hope that you will look to us as partners because I know you all have jobs and you're all very busy and you all dedicate your time as commissioners. And this is what we do because we believe in it and we're committed to it. And we still have the capacity to help partner with you to do the research and give you what you need to bring it to a good conclusion here.
I think you should take a stab at grant writing.
Well, no.
We will, we will. No, no, I, we will, we have written some small grants and we've gotten some. But we will take a stab at it. But our goal right now is to get a confirmed commitment from the town, from the government, to turn 80, to turn 133 into a street. Okay, number one is the commitment to turn it into a usable street and to put cars second. And I'm going to harp on this again, that building that roundabout at Nisslannick is putting cars first.
At industry.
I'm sorry, building it in industry without a crossing at Nisslannick is doing what we've done all along. Put cars first. We've got to move the cars from, from the main road back to that other side of town, thinking of the cars first. We want a commitment from the town to put pedestrians and cyclists and people and walkers and wheelchairs first. That's our goal, number one. Number two, once we have that commitment, we need to put together some kind of a plan about how that would look. You know, we want some planter islands here. We want a raised crosswalk here. When we've got that plan, then we can start writing grants to get that plan into reality piece by piece. But we're not at that point because we haven't got that commitment yet.
Well, and but I, I think you've done the important first step though. And I think this document was, is that great first step? I know, I speak for this entire commission. We are grateful for the presentation tonight and all the knowledge that you have shared with us.
And you need to move along.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I know, we're welcome to stay, but we won't.
Stuff. Riveting stuff, always. All right, on to our next item, staff update. Jared, tossing the ball to you.
You know, I, I think, yep, everyone was at Tuesday night's. You know, I uh, I think, yep, everyone was at Tuesday night's um BOT check-in. Um, I think we had some, some good conversations between the P and Z and the BOT um, on some ongoing projects. I just wanted to kind of check in with you all um, as we're looking at the next steps for preparing additional regulations or research or documentation for um the community housing inclusionary requirements. I got that, I think I got that right. Inclusionary zoning um for simplicity. Um, I want to make sure that I'm checking with you guys and, and seeing if there was some takeaways that you heard from that meeting or things that you would like us to, to try to research or come back with to kind of make that next conversation productive. You know, I don't want to go into the depths of, of discussing that since it is a notice public hearing and save that for the next meeting, but if there was any high level things that said, hey, you know, maybe we should consider this or that, we can at least bring it back and have a little bit of time to do some work on it.
You know, I, I think um, I saw reactions from every, every, everyone here around the idea of tiered and kind of a dynamic approach to this rather than a kind of a twenty to twenty-five percent, and then we're going to call it good. It seemed like there was, there was uh so many times the, the phrase creative solutions uh was used. Awesome, and, and, and a lot of interesting things came out of that, nothing like, you know, mind blowing. But something that I was wanting to do was almost like create a set of columns, like what are these threads? And then what are the gradations within each of these threads? So that if we're thinking about how it, how it kind of can be mixed into a functional mosaic based on the extremes, i.e. a two unit or an A, an ADU all the way up to the next megalith that comes into town. What, what might that matrix look like? So it's almost like less research and more just like what, what are the tools that could be available? And how might we, how might we begin to see them as a commission so that it's, it's kind of all in front of us to some degree? And I don't know, not it, 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 I guess this idea was again, just kind of a quick and dirty process, it wasn't asking for a lot, but just more as a visual person was what I was thinking about. Because there were a lot of interesting ideas.
Yeah, I agree with you, I think that tiered approach is, is, is exactly, is exactly right, Nick. I, I didn't, I didn't get the impression that anybody, there were a lot of people in the room and, but I didn't get the impression that anybody in the room felt compelled to uh make it more prohibitive for small developers.
Right, right.
It sounded like everybody in the room was interested in making it um, you know, applying maybe that twenty-five percent, that larger percentage to developments over ten units.
As well as the idea of like rent versus own versus, you know, the, the other pieces in there as well, like these, these gradations working up toward higher densities, higher unit counts. Which seemed like it kind of peaked at the example of the annex, annexable, is that a word? Annexable properties? We'll just, we'll go with that, yeah, there we go. What up, Urban Dictionary? So, you know, I don't know. Jeff, Kim, what, what, what were your takeaways on all that?
Tiered approach for sure. You know, even maybe higher percentages on large developments, I, I think it'd be interesting to look at what the large greenfield development opportunities are and, and see what our, our needs are to make it debt in affordable housing. But also the, the point that um Nick Michonne is making is the, the desire not to hinder small developers and to understand if the changes we're making are going to have the impacts we desire, like I just remember hearing that twenty percent, one out of every five unit threshold in a small development led to lots of four unit developments. And I wonder if we go to one every, out of every four, if we'll see three unit developments that are larger in size and free market to avoid triggering that, that twenty-five percent uh requirement. And then the fee in lieu or some type of, some type of fee that is contributing to a pot of public money.
I think there was also the, the idea, Jeff, on, on looking at square footage instead of units or, or using a square footage uh kind of components, so that it wasn't just this unit count, which like, like you just kind of described is, is somewhat avoidable or, or flexed on, can be flexed on.
Yeah, I would need, I would need to understand how that would be implemented in a small development, but I, I think that for large developments, that's probably a uh, that's probably a good tool allowing the developer to kind of choose the mix of, of unit types. But I don't know, I'm curious. Ms. Kim?
Yeah, I completely agree, tiered for sure, and I agree with what everybody said. Nicholas, I really I'm with you, I'd love to see kind of a, a list, a chart, something where we actually see what some of these creative solutions could be. And, you know, I don't know that we have that much space left for these huge developments, but I agree, we need to examine that and see what that would look like as well, so. But it'd be nice to have everything, you know, in a spot where we could look at what some of the options could be with these more creative solutions.
Yeah, almost, almost kind of like a, like a, I've seen different, or actually have written different urban design plans where it's almost like, you know, you get the tools for building and massing facades, setbacks, you know, these kind of things, it's like pick one from each, almost each, each each tier or each column, you could almost imagine something like that going through this, like almost test driving. Which pieces would come together to kind of get the derived solutions and some would break, some would work. But I, I, it's, I guess my question is like, you know, what, what kind of process are we going to use to determine you know, success versus overload versus underload, right? I mean, I, I think, you know, I, I, a lot of our work at my firm is, is, is developer driven or a certain component of it. And I just know that developers will find a way to hit their numbers. So, so I, like I said at the meeting, I, I really hope the creativity, we, we take that on and then let them be less creative and more spreadsheet driven um in their process.
Right.
Is anyone familiar with, uh, I had the opportunity last weekend, and sorry for that little personal story, but I think it is, does apply. I went to a, a, a meeting in Bend, Oregon, it's the Small Scale Developer Forum, has anybody ever heard of this? It's a sub pocket of ULI. It's a group who's very passionate about um development that is clearly small in scale, but that is community focused. And really, and really tries to retain and enhance community character. Still looking, of course, for a profit, uh, but it is not so driven at, at a, at a large scale um or more conglomerate approach. It, it, it started about fifteen years ago. The book is called Building Small by Jim Hyde, H E I D. I actually wanted to get it as a present for every single commissioner and trustee. I think it's actually, if, if any of you have a spare minute uh or, or are truly interested in this, I'd really recommend the book. As well as all the stuff that comes from uh Jim and what he's, what he's built around it, but I, I think there's a lot to be learned about the challenges. And so I asked, I asked the question of the, the trustees about, you know, the granularity, like, like what are we trying to, what, what do we as a town want? Do we want more big, do we want more small, is, is it somewhere in the middle? Because right now, our, our, our UDC as it's designed is, is traditionally, I guess, it's, it's this one size fits all. So I like that we're thinking about, you know, I don't think we have solutions yet, but we're, we're thinking about this, right? We're, we're trying to say, you know, what is it that we're reinforcing versus what is it that we are, you know, kind of excluding or making it harder for? I think it's a really, a really good place to start is, you know, what, what is it that, that our, our UDC really reinforces and is it in alignment with this town character, you know, this um on that scale question? So, sorry for the soapbox, but I thought it was, you know, kind of appropriate consideration to, to put out.
Maybe it's worth it to explain to people what ULI stands for.
Uh, Urban Land Institute, if, if you are not familiar with ULI, sorry for the acronym.
What is the Urban Land Institute?
Would you like to define it for us?
I, I don't, I mean, I, I, I'm a member, but I don't know that I could define it, but I think it's important, like that is, I think there's, maybe it's worth it to investigate that entity.
This is not a ULI book.
No, no, I get that, this guy, Jim Hyde wrote it. But ULI in and of itself is worth discovery. If, if there is anybody out there who isn't familiar with Urban Land Institute, it's a, it's a pretty great, pretty great organization.
Were there any other um topics, either ADUs or um, or uh childcare facilities, points that we wanted to, to discuss or feedback for us or did you guys feel comfortable with those conversations and where they went?
What was, what did we hear, we heard about, we heard increasing ADUs in both size and allowance. Did anyone have a, a twitch or concern about that point?
Not at all.
That was great, I thought it was great as well, personally. Seems like more opportunities for people who are, I mean, workforce housing. Uh, there was of, of course, the question around, uh, I, I, I saw some, a moment of pause for some, for some trustees around the idea of uh uh vacation rentals. Which I, I think is, you know, we, there's clearly a lot of different opinions or can be different feelings on that. Do we have any, does this commission or does staff any, have any feelings on the idea of vacation rental or short stay housing?
Personally, professionally? So I think it's, it, it's, it's definitely a nuanced conversation. You know, I can see benefits and, and drawbacks to each one and, you know, I think when we dive into ADU regulations, you know, maybe there's a consideration of a larger ADU or something like that that um has prohibitions on short term rentals, so it becomes locals housing and meets those needs of, you know, families or single parents with kids or things like that and, and maybe, you know, similar to how you guys are discussing that tiered approach to the inclusionary zoning requirements, maybe there's some sort of tier where, you know, if you're building that small truly kind of studio type unit, that's more appropriate for a short term rental, but that two bedroom unit should be more intended for the family or vice versa. You know, and so maybe that's a, a conversation that we get into of, of that, but um yeah, I mean, I, I think from a short term rental perspective, we have licenses for ADUs. And I would suspect that as more ADUs get built, we'll have more requests for licenses for ADUs. I don't think we have a great grasp on the number of ADUs that actually exist in this community. And um, nor do we have a great grasp today on the number of short term rentals that truly exist in this community and so to, to draw some correlation between the two, I think would be foolish of us at this moment. But hopefully kind of as the short term rental uh licensing and enforcement kind of gets ramped up, we'll have a better grasp on that. And as we um provide more pathways for short term rentals to be legalized, we'll, we'll kind of get a better grasp on that, maybe we can start to make some more of those connections with, with the data. So yeah, it, it, it's tough, but I, I think that nuanced approach could be something that that provides pathways for both.
Right.
Other than that, you know, I know this conversation about one thirty-three. Just to kind of give you guys some, some updates, I think I've updated you all in the past. The town is working on MAP Carbondale, which is the town study, we are anticipating folding in the age friendly Carbondale's report and recommendation in some form or fashion into that larger study and so you know, the recommendations they have, the work they have will be incorporated. So far, we've seen a lot of alignment between what MAP Carbondale has um identified and recommended and what the one thirty-three study has identified and recommended, so it's not like we're talking about two different, you know, apples and oranges, they're, they're they're very similar, not identical, but have a lot of similarities. And, you know, I, I didn't get into it there, but um, you know, part of the whole grant writing process is having those plans in place, having that community support in place that demonstrates to the state and federal governments and those larger agencies that this is truly a project that the community wants. And so Nick, to your point, this is almost a required first step to start applying for those grants. So I think it's great that we have MAP Carbondale and we have this and we can say, look, this community told us loud and clear that these are things we want. Now, federal, state, other entities help us fund and create these realities, so.
It really is a perfect spot. We actually are working under a C dot contract right now, doing a, a community highway stitch project on the front range. And it's, and it, all you really needed, all we need as this town are these pieces that you already have working together.
And I'm sure you're seeing in that program, I, I do have to agree with what um Nikki and, and Ron said, there has been a very seismic shift in thinking at C dot with regards to how state highways are perceived, especially ones like one thirty-three. I think there's been a um very renewed focus on um multimodal improvements on state roadways. Whether that's all state, whether that's federal, whether it's a combination of, doesn't matter, but I've seen it where they truly do want to do more multimodal projects and so, you know, I do think we're well positioned with this study to you know, pursue some funding opportunities and get in the um ever growing queue of projects that need assistance to become a reality, but.
I wonder if we're going to expect some state or federal mandates in that direction in the near future. Work that hard on it, this is going to happen.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't be surprised, I think um C dot probably has some mandates that says portions of roadway project funding have to go to multimodal aspects of those and so, you know, they're getting mandates in some of their bigger projects that say, I don't know, I'll pick a number, ten percent of the overall project funding have to go to these non-motorized improvements and so at least there are some mandates in those scopes that help make some of these projects a reality.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're actually doing underpasses, so that, that's, that's the tool that we are, you know, locked into right now. And the surrounding places to it, so it'll be interesting to see how this goes, I mean, it'll, it'll serve one thirty-three well. If I could add one more, I guess, kind of flavor to this one thirty-three discussion. Comp plan update, one thirty-three, dot, dot, dot. Will it just be MAP Carbondale, will that, will that kind of serve that, will there ever, will we ever come back to the comp plan and finish kind of what we started there? I didn't want to ask it during the trustee meeting, it seemed like a little bit of a grenade, what we, we didn't have time for, so I'm just going to drop it here.
Ever is a uh long timeframe, so yes, eventually, I, I would suspect we will look at either a second half of a comp plan update or Look at either a second half of a comp plan update or. A full comp plan update.
Yeah.
I don't have a good sense of a timeline for that. But, um, certainly adopting MAP Carbondale as kind of a formal. Plan or sub-plan of the comp plan provides a lot more teeth to that. To, to those recommendations, so that when a development comes through, we can say. How are you, um, meeting the comprehensive plan and its? Sub-plans of which MAP Carbondale is one of those. And so we can look to these projects and say, show us how you are addressing some of these. Challenges we've identified for pedestrian infrastructure, bicycle infrastructure, vehicular infrastructure. And, um. Be a active partner in. And, and funding or building those improvements, depending on what the project is.
Yeah.
So, um. I, I think it will have some immediate teeth, but I. I, I would guess that with that, with some of the other work with kind of the. Staffing level the town has, we're probably looking at a. You know, maybe a. Five-year horizon before the trustees feel comfortable funding.
Yeah.
The next iteration of the comprehensive plan that might fold some more of these elements back into the overall comp plan.
Right, well, and the community might be actually ready for one again at that point.
Yeah. Other than that, I, I don't, I don't have much in the way of other staff updates, other than we have a ton of. Development activity coming through. Big projects, small projects. I don't know, Ellie, if you wanna kind of give some highlights on some of those.
Five fences this week.
Fence-arama.
Yep, lots of people want fences, a bunch of other small things I'm working on. We have Ragged Mountain Sports for next week.
Are they moving?
No, um.
It's to stay in the industrial building that they're in.
That industrial building had a lot of, um, work done without building permits. Once we pulled the threat on it. We realized that, um. Couple of the uses in there did not get the necessary approvals to operate. One was optimum golf, which has since been. Closed down in that location. The other is Ragged Mountain Sports and interestingly. The zoning there requires a special use permit if you're running a small-scale retail operation. But a large-scale retail operation in the industrial zone district is permitted as a use by right. Interesting.
Subjective threshold?
Uh, ten thousand square feet. So.
And what are they at?
Well under. Four thousand, give or take. Ten thousand's relatively big. Yeah. Um, so it, it was just interesting, um, and so, you know, I don't anticipate a lot of controversy, but. We wanted to help get Ragged Mountain Sports.
Yeah.
Legally operating there.
That'd be nice.
So you'll see a notice public hearing for that, um, at your next meeting. Okay, how many building permit applications have we submitted in the last week for new homes? Or major additions, six, seven?
Ten.
Ten.
I get them from Mary, that one's today.
Town core?
Uh, some in town core, out in RVR, um, there's just a lot of construction-related. Building permit applications coming into town, so. Not so much that they're coming to this body, but just to kind of help paint the picture of. There's a lot of activity in town that's. Utilizing a lot of our staff time on. On, on building related, um, requests, so, um, just want to fill you guys in on, on that. Other than that, do you guys have any other? For.
Design guidelines?
Yeah, for all the people watching online. Now or later, um, the RFP for the, um. Historic Preservation OTR Design Guidelines is out. The, uh, response due date is June first. At three P M, so. If you're interested in submitting a proposal, please do. Um, yeah, that's all we got.
I have one last question. Sorry, I forgot to ask. The Jared, Jared's question that he didn't show up to. Field.
Yes.
How can we avoid that in the future? With, with the pot shop. On West Main. Is that something that, that? And maybe we didn't talk about this. Sorry to hold us all late with this question. I know we're all done. But that, that, I, I was just a little confused on that and wondering. There was a lot of pieces to that denial and a lot of, I, I think disconnect between. The bot and P and Z on that. It's, and it seems like we've had a few lessons learned on that. And it still seems like questionable sequence that. Maybe there's some things in our end we can, we can do with that. Any, any insights on that one? All the extra staff time that, that you all have?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll, I'll throw, I'll throw staff into the mix as well. I think the staff turnover in the middle of that project.
Yeah.
Did not help that project at all. You know, I wasn't a part of any of the conversations. Any of the work done with the applicant to lead up to the application being presented before you and so. A lot of it was just kind of looking at what little record we had in our files. Um, trying to piece together what was discussed at the meetings and so, um. I would say that was a factor that negatively impacted the outcome. A- as well, but you know, I think what. What the trustees kind of said is, is a reality and also a challenge, right? The comprehensive plan and the future land use map is truly that. It's. A future land use map and I don't think you all were. Wrong in wanting to push that application towards that future vision. With that being said, I don't think the trustees were wrong in saying. We don't have some of the. Regulations in place that prohibit us from approving this.
Yeah.
You know, one of the review criteria is, you know, consistency or compatibility with the comprehensive plan, but it's not. Um, adherence to every aspect of the comprehensive plan and so. There's some wiggle room within that where they could have. Said yes to a lot of those, but they could have met a lot of those elements, but maybe not some of these other elements and so. I think maybe moving forward. And, and Nick, you, I think you kind of recommended it there is. If the planning commission is going to recommend denial of something. Really spending some time to make sure that record. Is really detailed and those reasons for denial are really well-developed. And that may mean. That may mean continuing an application, telling staff to prepare findings for denial. I think that could be helpful so that. Staff, the planning commission have time to kind of think, process. And put together something in writing that's really well-developed. Highlighting, in that case, it would have really been highlighting all of those elements of the future land use map. And of the comprehensive plan where that development didn't meet it. And actually might have been contradictory to that, and that might have helped give. Paint that picture to the trustees in a more cohesive way, not just. We want mixed-use development and this is a single-use development, right?
Yeah.
And, and it could have, um. Demonstrate that a little bit better and, and I do think what they brought up saying, it's okay for the planning commission to come here and say, look. We wanna really expound upon what our rationale was. Been a couple moons and I think I've slept once or twice since then, so I think. Some of you may have showed up to that meeting, but I'm not entirely sure. Jeff, you might have shown up to that appeal meeting.
I, I don't think I was there.
Okay.
Not, not the appeal, at least.
Yeah, I, I thought there was somebody with the planning commission who might have shown up and so. That, that's also something that could, could help or participate online or, or whatever that is.
Yeah, it, it's, I, I hear that request and I would just say, on the, on the, the level of being human. You know, being in the, in the fire once is, is one thing. Especially, I mean, I, if my memory serves, I was a bit of a volatile applicant. They, they, they did get a little upset and. Disrespectful, I'll say, during that, that, so to, to go back into that. I don't know if, I, I always speak for myself, I, I would not jump at that opportunity.
Understandable.
Um, happy to put some additional notes in and, and to do that kind of thing. But yeah, it's, it's a big request, I think. There will no doubt be a time and an appropriate place though for that kind of action. Thank you for, for that guidance of Jared, I appreciate it.
Yeah, of course.
Any other commissioner comments? Him, Jeff, Nick?
We'll have a number of public hearings, notice public hearings at the next meeting, so, um. Please let us know when we get the, uh, packet out. If you guys are able to or unable to attend, that would be great. June. Eleventh, thirteenth? Thirteenth. Eleventh is B O T. So, yeah.
Right on.
Thank you.
Thank you all, uh, I will, uh. Welcome a motion? Thank you much.